Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting Churchill County Planning Commission to order December 11th, 6:00 PM. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mark.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three. Do we have any public comment? None heard. Number four, verification of the posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted as stated on the agenda and in accordance with NRS 241 and Churchill County Code.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, consideration, possible action, approval of agenda as submitted or revised.
Mr. Chair, Zach, for the record, I move to approve the agenda as submitted or revised.
Motion has been approved and seconded. Agenda item six, verification of notification of all landowners in accordance with NRS and the Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
Every attempt to reach landowners was made.
Agenda item number seven, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on November 13th, 2024, public hearing. Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record, move that we approve the minutes of the meeting held on November 13th, 2024.
Motion has been approved and seconded. Oh, all in favor say aye. Motion's.
I did.
Agenda item under number eight, a letter of resignation as a member of the Planning Commission from Eric Blakely has been received, who has been elected to serve on the Board of County Commissioners starting in January 2025.
There's no action needed on this, but we did receive a letter from newly-elected Commissioner Blakely, who cannot serve at the same time. He was asked to resign at this point so that if there was ever an appeal from an action taken at tonight's meeting, it wouldn't have a conflict next month.
Agenda item number nine, old business. Looks like the old business items motions are the motions for the annual review of SUP and renewal of a temporary use permit. Do we have any comment on that?
There were no old business items.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we don't have any old business at this point.
So we're not approving these or not? Okay. Item number 10, new business, consideration and possible action, an application filed by Trevor DeBraga for property located at 11356 Stillwater Road, 1225 Swope Lane, and 11050 Fitz Lane. Assessors' parcel numbers 009-071-07, 009-07213, and 009-07221, consisting of approximately 212.48 acres with approximately 170.38 acres of irrigated water righted property. The applicant proposes to place a conservation easement on this property. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Randy Hines, Churchill County Public Works. The subject properties, these subject properties meet the minimum acreage and dust control requirement to qualify as an acceptable sending site, as well as benefit the community by agriculture preservation with water right retention, protection of military operations, and protection of water recharge area. Based on the transfer development rights calculation, the total TDRs for the three properties are 277. The sending site committee reviewed the application on November 18th, 2024, and recommends approval of the sending site as well as the 277 TDRs.
Does the commission have any questions for Randy? Do we have any public comment? Staff is, go ahead. Staff is recommending approval on this item. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, for the record, I move that we approve the conservation easement for the DeBragas on the parcel numbers 009-071-07, 009-07213, and 009-72-21.
So this is a recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners, just so you know.
They also need a recommendation on the TDRs, the number of TDRs.
Well, I'll expand on the motion then, approving all TDRs per staff's recommendation.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Goings, seconded by Commissioner Frey. All in favor? All opposed? Motion has been approved unanimously. Item B, consideration, possible action, a special use permit application for a motorized racetrack filed by John Liedem, owner of Club Rowdy LLC. The property is located off of Lovelock Highway, US 95, assessors' parcel number 004-431-44, consisting of 218.57 acres in the RR 20 zoning district. Or Dean?
Mr. Liedem, are you Mr. Liedem? No. So I'm not sure Mr. Liedem has arrived.
Anybody here to comment on this one?
So Joe, I can do the presentation, but would it be better to ask if the board wants to postpone this meeting until the applicant can attend?
I did speak to Mr. Liedem, and he was supposed to be here tonight.
Take a recess for 10 minutes?
It's board's option at this time. We could either table this, we could have Mr. Patterson go through the application, assuming you have questions. I believe this particular application probably will have questions, and at that time, if he's still not here, table it then. Or at this time, we can move forward with item 11, 11A and 11B, to give Mr. Liedem time to appear. And if he isn't still here at the time of the conclusion of the meeting, then I would recommend just either tabling it or denying it.
I'd like to hear Dean talk on it.
What's that, Zach?
I'd like to hear Dean talk on it.
What's the rest of the commission want to do?
It's not in lieu, though, right? Because I would like to hear from the representative of Rowdy. So if we listen to Dean, is that in lieu of?
No.
No.
Dean can give us a kind of little background and what we would be looking at. And we wouldn't take action until he got here, if he doesn't come, we would table it.
How do you feel about jumping to 11, running through the rest, and then coming back to this, and hopefully he's here by then?
And I guess I'd have a question for Joe. If I give a presentation and he's not here to kind of hear what's being said and respond, is that a problem or not?
It's his fault for not being here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what's the commission want to do, move it forward or jump to 11?
I think we can jump forward, and even though it may not be an issue, if he shows up after Director Patterson's presentation, he doesn't really get to answer to it. So if he doesn't show up, then I get it. But we've got a couple items we can do, let's move on.
We're going to temporarily table item B for a second. Action item number 11, recommendation for Bill 2024-E, Ordinance 71, and ordinance amending titles 13 and 16 of the Churchill County Code, to, one, consolidate water dedication requirements within Title 13 of the Churchill County Code; two, clarify water dedication requirements for all land development; three, set payment in lieu of dedication requirements for all land development; and four, designate the purposes to which payments in lieu of dedication may be put.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Joe Sanford, for the record. This is a code amendment, the large purpose of which, as set forth in the title, is to consolidate our water piece from Title 13 and Title 16 to just Title 13. Right now, it is split partially between those two. While it mostly agrees between those two, not everything does, and that has created a little bit of complications in the past. This will allow us to know that if you have a question related to water, water dedication, water connection, what water requirements will be, it will be found within Title 13. Title 16 will maintain a small portion that has to do with the timing of when people are going to have to follow these things, when involved in a parcel map or a parcel subdivision. But the actual code requirements will all be within Title 13. The second part of it is to establish exactly how the county moves forward with water dedication. At the present time, development is not authorized to be involved in a payment in lieu of dedication requirement. And so what this means is that when someone wishes to do any form of development, they must actually have the water and dedicate it to the county. As you're, I'm sure, all aware, having served on this board or been in this community, that is a very large barrier to development. And so the solution at this time is to create a system where someone can make payment to the county, have the county water used for the supply of development infrastructure, and then there is a rate, depending on how much water is being dedicated, that is used as sort of a surcharge to allow the county to replenish that water. And so if you look through the proposed code amendments, you'll see that this is outlined largely on page six, which sets the equation for how much water is required in a multifamily residential setting, as well as page eight. And then page eight is where the density calculations are based. So for example, a payment in lieu of dedication is equal to the market value of water, whether that's surface water or groundwater, and then it's multiplied by a factor. And that factor is, for residential unit density of less than four units an acre, 1.5; more than four but less than eight, 1.3; and residential unity density greater than eight would be This will create a fund, and that fund will allow the county to either purchase water directly or land with water to replenish this amount. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Anybody on the commission got any questions?
Vice Chair Mark Hyde, for the record, I've been over this, not with a fine tooth comb, but I have gone over it. And I guess I want to say this, that this is really the first time in the county that I've seen this kind of overture made to developers, make it possible for them to develop in the county. What we're doing right here is actually what's in place in the city, where if you don't have underground water rights, you can buy them from the city. And so I think this is a great move to encourage development. And I've looked at your formula, and I think it's generous, and I think the county still is not hurt by it. So I think it's a win-win. And I had an earlier question, but you solved that for me, so we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, so I only had one other question, and my question was, is these, these water, I mean, this payment in lieu of water, are we, is the county required to, by the state, to have water before, so, for example, let's, my example, I'm trying to form a question here. If we've got, and let's just say you required four acres of water, four water rights, four acres of water rights to do your development, does the state require that four acres of water, or is that just our county requirement? Is that just our county code, or is there something that is driven by the state that forces this county to require those water rights?
So it's both. We are required by the state on when we provide water. We have a water treatment plant, we provide water through that. And so the state will require that we have sufficient water right to operate that plant and deliver that much water. We can't divert more water than we have dedicated to that purpose. And so right now, we're not directly in that problem, but if we didn't have the water rights to back it up, we couldn't operate that plant. And so right now, when a developer does a dedication, that's what they do, is they dedicate that amount of water to that plant, and then we file through the state engineer to say, that's what that water will be doing.
Okay, so that actually helps a lot. So that is where I was headed. So let's assume, then, we do this, and we do a lieu instead of water rights. Who is then going to be obligated to find those water rights that are going to be required at that point? Is that going to be on the county? Is that, because it's obviously, the developer can now pay us in lieu of, the county then has to find those water rights?
Yes. And right now, the county has those water rights. Right now, most of them are at the Wild Goose Ranch facility, as well as some other places, which was purchased for the purpose of gathering those water rights. And so essentially, the county is working as sort of a broker, where a developer may say, hey, look, I've got a three-year timeframe, and I need 250 acre feet of underground water right. If that water right isn't on the market, and right now, that water comes on and on off the market, on occasion, but if you're not looking for it, you might miss that, and then they can't get it some other time. And so now, the county would be in a position that if that water were to come for sale, which right now, when it does, a lot of that ends up being purchased by either the tribe or other entities for this same purpose.
So final question, because I just want to get my mind wrapped around this. So let's assume now that we have all of these water rights out there, and let's just assume that things take off, and we have many developers that come in and pay in lieu of water rights. Now, all of a sudden, that pond or that amount of water rights starts to get, you know, we're starting to get low on it. What does, what do we now do? Now, what is that? Now, we're talking way in the future, but I'd like to know where we're headed with that.
So the county has, does not, is not under any obligation to accept a payment in lieu. And this code has a part to say, look, there may come a time where the county will not accept your payment in lieu because there's either insufficient resource, or we don't think it's best for the valley because, you know, growth is being unsustainable, or something in that case. And so that would be up to the county commission at the time.
I've got a couple of questions. By allowing people to buy water rights, or developers to buy water rights for a period of time, and then the county decides, hey, we don't want to do this anymore, have you set precedents to get sued over that?
Well, two things. First, I want to clarify, they are not buying the water rights. They are, and I know that that seems like a distinction without a difference, but just for the record, it is slightly different. And then, second, the precedent is because we've put in the code that this is a discretionary choice based off of our reserve, then no. Now, look, if, for example, there is potential lawsuits, if it was, we're picking which developer we like, and you applied and got approved, you applied and got denied, you applied and got approved, you applied and got denied, of course, but that's true of any government action. In this case, the county has its protection by saying, look, we're going to have a basis to deny it. It's within here, which is, you know, how much water resource we have left, and how quickly we anticipate growth. Obviously, the county doesn't want to have one rush of all of the developers in one year run out of its water and say, okay, well, come back again in five years when we've accumulated. But I am not concerned of a litigation risk based off the precedent.
My other question is, do you guys believe there's enough underground water available to continue these purchases, because that's limited in this basin?
Indefinitely, no. The purpose, though, is to allow for the accumulation at times when perhaps development isn't hot, and to acquire them at a pace that is reasonable based off of what development has occurred and what funds have been made to the county. So there is only so much underground water right here. This is an issue all across northern Nevada, and so there is a limit to how much water can be sold. Obviously, the county can't sell more water than it has, or allow for a payment in lieu of dedication for more water than it has.
Okay, so these payments in lieu of, you have to have the water rights backing that up?
Yes, we already have the water when this is made.
Awesome, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Joe Frey. One thing I'd like to say, too, is that the way I see it, is this is also, Joe mentioned, to provide sewer and water treatment and stuff, it's also to protect our groundwater and make sure that as development happens, water is not leaving or disappearing from the valley. And so I think this does it, and this also, I mean, this code doesn't do it, this is just a refresher of existing practices that are already happening, but it really puts the county in the driver's seat, having that Wild Goose water. I think the county may be the largest holder of underground water in the county.
Tucker.
And, oh, maybe Tucker, yeah. And so, you know, the county, through their well-monitoring system and stuff, could also put the brakes on at any time and say, we're no longer issuing payment in lieu of water rights because our water tables are receding or things like that. So I don't know. I think everything stays good with the current language.
And I, last comment, I do like this in that it does open the door for developers now, without them being shut down immediately trying to find water, which we've already run into that a few times on here. So if we have the water to sail, and we've been looking for some development anyways, yeah.
Any other comments from the board? Public comments? None heard. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair Mark Hyde, for the record, I guess we're in a situation here where we can make the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, right? So I move that we recommend Bill 2024-E, Ordinance 71, and ordinance amending titles 13 and 16 of the Churchill County Code, to consolidate water dedication requirements within Title 13 of the Churchill County Code; and number two, clarify water dedication requirements for all land development; and three, set payment in lieu of dedication requirements for all land development; and four, designate the purpose to which payments in lieu of dedication may be put.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Goings. All in favor?
Aye.
John Liedem, are you here now? Okay, so let's jump back to item B. It's a special use permit application for a motorized racetrack filed by John Liedem, owner of Rowdy, Club Rowdy LLC. The property is located off Lovelock Highway, US 95, Assessor Parcel Number 004-431-44, consisting of 218.57 acres in the RR 20 zoning district. Dean?
So Mr. Liedem is here. Would you state your name and address for the record? It just touched the red light, and it'll turn green.
John Liedem, 9325 Pond Street, Reno, Nevada, 89506.
Thank you. So you have before you an application for a motorized racetrack with night operations and with accessory dry camping. The site is far north of Fallon, in the northwest corner of the Carson Sink. It's off of US 95, about a half mile eastward on Pole Line Road. There are a number of difficulties in reviewing this application. It follows a trend in which people want to establish a business with little or no facilities, and they want employees and visitors to use porta-potties. The difficulty in reviewing a racetrack with events and crowds is that the impacts are highly dependent on attendance. Some normal racetrack impacts will not apply in this case because there are no neighbors, but other impacts relate to adequate facilities, such as restrooms with sewer and water facilities for large crowds, parking lots, including handicapped accessible spaces, high-traffic volumes on gravel roads, and overloading the capacity of an intersection. So these are just things that need to be looked at in this case. Since there are no grandstands or other structures, staff was unable to readily determine the capacity of the facility, which is needed to determine adequate facilities and infrastructure impacts, other than by using the estimated crowd size in the application, which was 200 spectators. In addition, a racetrack has unusual operations and hours in that it operates as an event facility. The normal peak usage is on race day weekends, but extra-large events can happen infrequently during the year. This encourages owners to think of their business as a festival with little or no facilities. An important element of this review is determining how to put car rails on the facility. After much in-house discussion, staff suggests, thinking about this project in a hybrid manner, there's some level of business activity that is normal and consistent, being daily, weekly, and monthly activity. Then there's the higher level of activity that is infrequent. Facility should be provided for the common level of activity, but the infrequent level of activity can be addressed using temporary facilities and temporary management practices. At the same time, an upper limit on special events needs to be set, and staff recommends that exceeding it requires a festival permit. Conditions of approval are proposed to deal with this issue. The proposal is the new racetrack facility, which will be on vacant land, and it will be Phase 1 of the project, covering around 10 acres. The application provides detailed descriptions of the project components. These include, can you go back one slide, please? These include, can you go back one slide, please? Yeah, thank you. So US 95 is on the east side of the property, Pole Line Road is on the north side of the property. The applicant had proposed, darn it, had proposed a business sign at the intersection. He has since sent an email saying he'd like to postpone that, and he'll apply for it at a later time. Next slide, please. So Pole Line Road is along the north side of the property. There's two entrances, access roads off of Pole Line Road. They, I made a new one of these, I think. The parking area is along, just south of the Pole Line Road, the handicap spaces are near the driveway. A ticketing booth is at the entrance gate. The, catch up here. The parking lot is sized for 60 vehicles, including four handicap spaces. The ticketing booth is at the entrance gate, and a pedestrian pathway runs from the parking lot to the ticketing booth. Oh, thank you, that's a good slide. It appears to be ADA accessible, but it also ends at the ticketing booth. There's two restrooms at the ticketing booth for employees. Spectators and other visitors would use the porta potties near the spectating area, which is south of the pit. On-site services for the facility include a well and septic system. Power would be provided by generators. Thus, the business's well, office room, restrooms, and lighting will depend on a generator. There's, can you go back one, two slides? The facility also has a security fence around the perimeter, whoops, in that area. So the parking lot is outside. The pit area lies south of the ticketing booth. It's where the race participants set up. In conversations with the applicant, spectators are allowed to walk around and through the pit area to observe the race participants and their vehicles. The pit area would also be used for dry camping for race participants to stay overnight in RVs or trailers. No hookup facilities for extended use are proposed. South of the pit area is the spectating area, which, no. It's in between the pit area, and you can see there's trees between the racetrack and the pit area. That's the spectating area. It is landscaped with trees. The pedestrian pathways is not identified to it, nor is ADA accessibility. On the east side are portable toilets, and so I think that probably needs one of the other slides. Can you go next slide? Another one? And one more? One more? Okay, one more. There it is. So, I think this has bad, dead batteries. Portable restrooms are planned along the east side. The driveways to the racetrack are on the west side. And along the south side of the spectating area, the application proposes barriers for safety, which, there is some separation. I'm not sure exactly how far, but there's some separation between the spectating area and the straightaway, which is probably the highest speed part of the course. Approximately 200 spectators are anticipated at this time. The size of the spectating area is about 15,000 square feet. The racetrack is paved and approximately 1,900 feet long, and provides a straightway in front of the spectating area. Landscaping is proposed throughout the facility, including along the south edge of the road, which was on one of the other slides, the south edge of the parking lot, and through this spectating area. And then, of course, this is Phase 1, so future phases will require additional special use permit. In the first phase, the facility will not have permanent staff, other than the owner, who will be present when the venue is open. 10 to 15 temporary employees will be used on the weekend. Visitor and traffic numbers will vary with the type of activity taking place. So on the weekday activity, it'll have low numbers and little or no spectators. On weekend race days, it'll have about 200 spectators plus race participants, and plus the 10 to 15 employees. And on large special events, they take place infrequently, but they would be expected to exceed the normal 200 spectators on the normal race days. This might include around 800, sorry, 400 people. Very large events, over 400 people, should be treated differently, such as through a festival permit. The hours of operation are described in the application as two modes, public and private. The facility is open to the public when there are weekday events, 7:00, 5:00 PM, though some events may run until 11:00. And in conversations with Mr. Liedem, I think he has some different ideas about night events, and so he can share those with us today. Note that facilities with night operations must be approved in a special use permit. Facility is available for private use by rental during the other days, mainly during normal business hours. The proposed dry camping in the pit area will allow overnight stays for race participants on big event weekends. No charges will, no fees will be charged, and no extended stay facilities are proposed. Night activities are proposed, and such activities require special use permit. Night racing would be during infrequent events. Night lighting may be needed for overnight participants as well. The applicant proposes mobile diesel-powered light plants. There's five special use criteria that are reviewed in the special, in the staff report. Criterion 1 is relating to compatibility with the existing surrounding area. The area is remote, and no human uses are nearby, so the facility will be compatible. Criterion 2 is conformance with the master plan and county code. The staff report reviews the different regulations in the code, which generate several recommended conditions. The main items worth bringing up here relate to providing facilities for spectators. Sorry about that. Relating to sewer and water facilities, water well and commercial septic systems must be approved by the state. The well might require water rights and approval as a public water system. Restrooms for employees and visitors, as mentioned, were an issue. They're the major issue of this review. Making visitors use porta potties is not allowed for large event facility. The issues determine the maximum occupancy for calculating the required number of restrooms, and in determining if they're adequately placed. Staff report describes the problem in detail. Determining the occupancy and the required restrooms is difficult. Using the spectating area would result in excessive numbers. The director and the building official decided to use the hybrid approach with attendance limits. The base occupancy would be the proposed 200 spectators unless another number is approved in this permit. Permanent restrooms must be provided for this number, but larger numbers could be handled with porta potty restrooms. The adequacy of restrooms would be checked at the annual review. Placement of the restrooms was also an issue. They cannot be, the permanent restrooms cannot be reserved just for employees at the ticket booths, so staff recommends that the permanent restrooms for visitors be relocated more centrally in the spectating area, along with other handicapped accessible facilities to reduce costs. The porta potties could provide for excess toilet needs during big events. Parking and loading requirements. The director determined that the proposed 60 parking spaces and four handicap spaces was adequate for normal operations and events, up to the 200 people proposed for spectators. An overflow parking area is needed for large events. However, the main parking issue relates to handicap parking in the path, the accessible path. The facility must be handicapped accessible, and accessible path must be provided between the handicap parking spaces, the buildings and restrooms, and an accessible location in the spectating area. There is an accessible pedestrian path between the handicap parking spaces shown on the plan to the ticketing booth, but no further. A complete accessible path needs to be provided. An alternative is to place all elements near each other by having the handicap parking spaces, the restrooms, and the accessible spectating location near each other. There are other issues discussed on the staff report, including lighting, signage, protection of streams, RV dry camping, and concessions. Criterion 3 relates to not overburdening public services and infrastructure. The staff report discusses the subject and notes there will not be overburdened. Criterion 4 relates to mitigating road and traffic impacts. There have been discussions with NDOT and the road department. The road supervisor recommends that Pole Line Road be upgraded to a county gravel road standard to handle the traffic from race day crowds. NDOT provided a letter. Mr. Liedem, have you already seen that by chance? NDOT provided a letter and indicates that in-road improvements are not, I'm sorry, are unlikely, but the paved intersection apron for Pole Line Road must be upgraded to the appropriate NDOT standard. Criterion 5 relates to environmental impacts. The main potential environmental concerns for racetracks are noise, glare from nightlighting, fumes, fuel spills, trash, high volume, high traffic volumes on the gravel road and the highway intersection, and dust from traffic on-site and the gravel road. These are reviewed in the staff report and result in recommended conditions. There were letters of support from Barium Incorporated. Not sure where they are located in relation to this site, but they support the development of the racetrack. Another letter of support from Kingfisher Sand and Gravel, also expressing support for the project. Other agencies provided comments that are described in the staff report. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, and Mr. Liedem can answer questions as well.
Thank you, Dean. Does the commission have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from the applicant if he had, you've heard all of this presentation, and do you have anything you would like to add to that?
At this time, I don't have anything to add.
I guess I'll feed off Jeff here a little bit. Zach, bring your, for the record. So have you read the staff report, like, with all the conditions that are listed?
Yeah.
That you'll have to complete to even get started with this?
Yep.
And you're good with all of it to be able to move forward?
I'd say the only one that I would debate is the size of the facility as far as the restrooms are considered, but I, on what grounds, I don't know. But just based on the fact that it's so isolated, and the, I would say that having a dormant septic system that's that large, because I think it's roughly 20,000 gallons, so I don't think the project is to that scale. Yes, we will have 200 visitors, but that would be over the course of the weekend, and it would be, you know, maybe 50 at any given time, and then spikes maybe up to 70 to 200, maybe, not a full hundred, or 200. So I think the recommendation for that big of a septic system is too much for this project, but that's all I have.
Yeah, and then you're well, we're like of the well, and then passing the water qualifications also.
What was that?
You're aware that you got to drill the well and pass the water specifications also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add something. Randy Hines, for the record, you were saying, have you got your septic system sized, or are you just guessing on the, would you say 2?
I'm just guessing off the 200.
Gotcha. So typically, those septic systems are based on fixture counts, and when we went through, it's hard for us to, to, as Dean mentioned, it's hard for us to get a number of spectators out there, right? You have a 15,000 square foot area for spectators, and essentially, per building code, it's five square feet per spectator, which could give you up to 3,000 spectators. We don't want to get, we don't want to say, oh, you need to have facilities for 3,000 spectators, right? That's a lot.
Obviously, yeah.
We went through and went back to the 200, and I think we came up with four women's bathrooms, and four men's, I'm sorry, four women's fixtures and four men's fixtures, and two of the men's could be urinals. So it's eight fixture units, eight fixtures for the bathrooms themselves, and then you've got the sinks as fixtures as well. I did not run the calculations on that, but I don't see that being anything over like a 15,000 gallon septic system tank, septic tank with the associated leach field. So the 200,000 is extremely large.
Did I say 200,000?
That's what I thought, yeah. Got you, okay, okay, and that's where I was going with it. So, and that's a pretty standard septic system for something like that. It's not large, you're probably looking at, you know, 20 feet by, 24 foot by 50 foot long leach field, and probably a 1,500 gallon or 2,000 gallon septic tank. Going back through code, you know, code requires us to have facilities, enough facilities for the people that are at the site, right? And not knowing exactly how many people are at the site, it's kind of hard to come up with that number. And I guess we were just kind of going back and forth on the use of the porta potties versus the use of actually having a facility there. So, and that's kind of what we came up with. Well, we can design a facility that handles the 200 people, and then kind of reevaluate that yearly, and see if that has to be expanded on at a later date, or something like that. But it's just kind of, it's a weird situation, because we just don't know.
Yeah.
How many people are out there, so.
Tammy Edgman, for the record. I do have a question, sir. In regards to the hybrid manner and thinking of it in that way, I know you're wanting to start with just generators. Is that feasible for expansion? I see this being something that is beneficial to the community. I think that you'll have a lot of support in the future. Is there a possibility for electricity?
I believe there is power to the west of the property, on the other side of the highway, but at this point, we were just going to use solar and generators, well, solar in the future.
Start with generators and then go to solar?
Yes, for certain things, like fixtures and those.
And because it is, you said it yourself, because it is so remote, I think it is very beneficial for you to have actual facilities, even if it's in a small demeanor to start out first, to have small facilities for the use of restrooms.
Yeah, and that's what we originally proposed, was that we would have something that could support maybe 20 to 30 people on a regular basis to include the employees. And then beyond that, we would use portables. This is a practice, I've been hosting these events for over 10 years, and that's been a common way that we've been able to host these. I've done them at Reno Friendly, Medford, Oregon, Apple Valley Speedway in Southern California. And it's usually a smaller restroom, maybe four fixtures, two fixtures situations, and then they subsidize with Porta-Jons as it, the events get bigger, or...
Special events.
Special events, yes.
Okay. Well, I have the mic, too. I want to go over something else in your application in regards to the dry camping sites.
Yes.
I highly recommend that we set some kind of a day limit for those. I know you say that they're going to be coming in on Fridays, leaving on Mondays, so maybe like a four-day, that way you don't have people camping there.
Absolutely.
For weeks at a time.
Yep, I agree.
Mr. Vice Chair Jeff Goings, for the record. Yeah, and I think, I think sometimes that what we're doing here is, and this is not to degrade what you guys have done, because I think you've done a great job. We have to start thinking a little bit out of the box on this. This is a kind of a group of people that is going to gather, and they're typically gathering at many events. It's the same people, same situation, different racetracks. I know in the Western world, it's a team ropers, it's a whatever.
Yes.
Okay, so when you look at it from that standpoint, when you talk about 200 spectators... Okay, so when you look at it from that standpoint, when you talk about 200 spectators, I'll bet that probably 50% of those spectators are actually competitors, family members that are there, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The other, the other thought here is, is you have that many competitors, you have that many people that are going to be staying out there. Typically, they're going to have a lot of their own restroom facilities right in their, in their trailer, or their, whatever they're bringing out, motorhomes, whatever it is.
Yes.
So, not, again, not to attack what you guys have done, because I think your work is great, my thought process here is though, is maybe that portion of this needs to be phased. As you start to see actual spectators that don't come with any of those kinds of facilities that they're bringing, now we begin to look at it as far as, and we can do it in a six month or an annual review, however we want to do that, but that's just my thoughts here, guys. I'm looking at this, and I like to see, I like to see new businesses coming in, and I think this one's so remote, and the people that it's going to draw, especially in the beginning, are going to be people that are expecting this kind of a setup from the very get-go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would like to see some sort of a hybridization of, you know, I think right now you have two restrooms planned, one men's and one women's restroom. If there's a way, and I don't know if it would comply with code or not, but, you know, where maybe that was sized up a little bit to handle the handicap needs, and if things could shift somehow on the layout to where that was handled, and there was a little bit larger restroom facility, but maybe less than what is possibly recommended in the staff report, but with the idea that expansion would be necessary if events start getting larger, you know, because I do understand you're trying to do a phased approach here, and we don't want to make it cost prohibitive, but I don't know if that complies with code or not.
Mr. Vice Chair Randy Hines for the record. You know, again, we kind of went back and forth, the building official and myself, and Dean, we've kind of, we discussed it, and I think there's some flexibility in there, because again, it's a hard situation, right? It's out in the middle of nowhere, you'd want to, if you're required to put in a bunch of improvements or, you know, facilities, and then it's, they're not being used, right? Or again, the septic not being used, the well's not being, whatever. So I think there's some flexibility in there. I guess if, if, if we decided to go that route, and we did, did the portable ones, you know, we'd have to make sure that they're ADA compliant. Any ones that are got brought in, there's an ADA compliant one in there, right? And that's, so, so that would be a thing, we'd have to make sure that's there. So I don't know if that's something, you know, if the facilities are there, and there's ADA routes, and they're ADA compliant, we don't have to worry about it because they're there, right? If they're not there, then now we have to go out and inspect and make sure they're there for the events, right? Or we have to have confirmation that they're for the events. So it's kind of, you know, we're kind of protecting ourselves and protecting, you know, the client as well, so, so that's kind of why we went with, let's start, let's size it for the 200, and then if we have to upgrade it there, from there, we can do that at a later date. So, again, I'm just, just kind of giving you guys some information. The other thing I'd like to add to that, I guess before Dean jumps on, is, is the ADA access, right? Placement of this stuff, of the ADA facilities is critical, right? Because now, the way you have it set up is you have the ADA parking, and you're, and I'm looking, you're probably, you're probably 50 feet away from the ticket booth, which is a little far, but then from there, you don't have any ADA access to the actual spectator area, and I think Dean pointed out that that would have to be there. One option that I'm not sure if you had mentioned was, you know, that ADA parking could be moved to the spectator area, which is closer, you could have the ADA parking down there to eliminate some of these ADA routes, right? The ADA stuff, we enforce that, that's more of a federal law, and it's not, you know, we're just enforcing it. So I could see there's probably some flexibility for you to get that ADA parking maybe in a different location, so you're not putting in a bunch of ADA routes, or something like that, so I think we buy them a little bit of flexibility for that as well.
Dean Patterson for the record. Relating to Jeff's comments, I wanted to point out that the 200 is based on spectators that Mr. Leadham estimated as being expected. It doesn't relate to the race participants themselves who are in the pit area, and like the application says, a lot of them, or most of them, or even all of them bring their RVs, and so their own restroom. Now, other people may come with the racer, and so it's not just the driver and his car, but it, you know, pit crew, their family, whatever, and so it's, there's a bit of a crowd in the pit area that's outside of the 200 spectators.
And just to answer that, Dean, here's my, what my thinking is on this, is that typically, this is going to be a family event, so you're going to have one racer who probably has a wife and a couple of kids, and they're figured in your spectator count, I'm thinking. Now, my next question would be then...
That's what I was saying, they're not part of the spectator count.
Oh, you're not counting the racer and his family as part of the spectator, because his family would be, I'm assuming, is part of your spectator count, correct?
I think I discern that, or is it...
I don't think I discern that in the proposal, but he is pretty much exactly right. It's usually one racer and a family, and maybe a friend or two that comes with it. That is the main influx of people that come out. It's usually pretty rare that somebody, it's a small percentage of random people that kind of just wander in, so I would say that was my bad for not making the distinction.
My next question to, to you guys then, is if, I like your idea of moving, possibly moving that ADA and making it, you know, more accessible. At this time, if he was to rent ADA portable, ADA portable toilets to put there instead of adding to the, you know, adding to his building facility, is, would that be code acceptable, or would not? Because I've been to, what I'm trying to think in my mind is, I've been to some places, to some events where those ADA restrooms, porta toilets, remain there at all times, but I'm just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm not dreaming this, and that, you know, this does...
So you can certainly do extra toilets, and they can be ADA, but when you do a restroom, it has to be ADA accessible from the start?
Well, no, I guess, I'm sorry, Dean, let me, let me rephrase that. What I meant was, is that you have that restroom facility that's going to be there, maybe that's your ADA, and then for the added events, you bring in not, not portables, but permanent portable toilets for the ADA overflow, and then that way, you've kind of got both your areas covered at all times. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That was my, my point, my thought here processes, is if you're going to have ADA spectators, you've got a couple of restrooms that would handle your four ADA spots, but then, in the, you know, in the event that you have a larger influx of people, you bring in some permanent ones and set them there, and now you're not having to move those in and out all the time. That was my thought, anyway.
Yeah, and that's pretty normal for events like this. I mean, you look at the Reno Rodeo, the Livestock Events Center, any of that stuff, they have a few. For the size of the facility, they don't have very many permanent restrooms. The Reno Rodeo shows up, they bring in 200 portables, they bring in handicap portables. I mean, that's pretty normal for places where there's nothing going on five days a week, and everything's going on on the weekends.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but they do actually have quite a few restrooms, permanent restrooms. Yeah, I mean, not for 50,000 people, but...
And again, that's where it was, we're just kind of struggling on how many restrooms that is, right? Because we're just trying to figure out what that, what that number is, okay? Again, if we're, if, and again, I think we can be flexible with, with the restrooms, right? If we're going to have the two, I think that's, they're, they're going to be ADA compliant anyway. If we're going to allow the portable ones, and there, and we make, and there's ADA restrooms there, we still have to have the ADA access to those, and that's either concrete or asphalt, that meets ADA requirements, right? So wherever you have those, wherever those are at, we have to have a hard surface for those, for access to get to those. It just can't be gravel. So, just, just, just to be aware, there's still going to be improvements for those, for those to be in there, so.
So to use Jeff's kind of example again on that, is how is that handled for like rodeo situations where there is usually no pavement during these events? How, how is that handled typically?
Because you've actually directed that question to me, I'll try to do my best answer. So typically, rodeo situation's a little different setup. Rodeo situations are usually in a improved fairgrounds, such as the Churchill County Fairgrounds. That is all ADA compliant. If you go around there, that you can, it's ADA compliant all the way to the restrooms, restroom facilities are all ADA compatible, everything is done there. My thought was, is, we go to a team roping event, and so team roping events are, they're much like motorcycle guys, they might, we don't care where we go, right? Or they don't care where they go, just so long as they have an arena and they have some animals to run at, right? And they bring their whole entire family, and they're not, the difference is, the problem is, is they are not doing it as a business, they're doing it more as a, you know, let's all get together and do this. You having this application, and, you know, and basically having a, a facility that is a business, you're going to be required to do those ADA, much as we do it with at the fairgrounds, or at the shooting event, same thing, you go to a shooting event, you know, most of those places have, are ADA compatible, all the restroom facilities, everything are ADA compliant.
I'm not specifically talking about the bathroom, restroom situation, I was more talking, I think he's talking about the pathway from the parking lot down to the spectator area.
Yeah, so again, I'm going to take the fairgrounds as an example. All of that fairgrounds area is paved, so from your ADA spots to the restroom facilities is all hard surface. It's either concrete, or it is asphalt, you know, you guys can chime in here anytime, but there's, anytime you have a facility like that, those surfaces are going to have to be hard surfaces.
Okay.
I have an ADA son, so I know what that's all about, and, yeah, you need to, you need to have those areas where those people can come in with wheelchairs and whatever, and be able to, you know, get from their car to the restroom facilities or the spectator areas, yeah.
All right, thank you for answering my question.
Yeah, and to follow up on, on Mr. Goings' comments, right? This is new construction, it is, you are treating it as a business, we will have, we just have, we'll have to have, it's going to be mandatory to make it ADA compliant, to the facilities that are ADA compliant, so. And again, that's federal, that's federal law, that's...
And I think we're flexible in moving that parking area. The only reason we put it on the outside of the gate is just for the liability. As motorsports hosters or event coordinators, usually you want to have them to sign the liability waivers before they enter where the facility, everything's taking place. So that was kind of the thought process behind that, but I, there's ways that we can still capture that signature on the waiver and, and be ADA compliant.
I don't know that I was necessarily wanting you to see him move that ADA area. I'm just following what Mr. Patterson was talking about, and Dean, planning...
Yeah, but that was something that they suggested.
...was talking about where they, that could be a hard surface, as long as it's a hard surface from the ADA parking area to the restroom facility, then that's compatible, correct? I mean, then that's acceptable.
And the accessibility, and the accessible spectating area. So it's kind of like going to a stadium, you have handicap accessible seating areas, so that people can...
So that was just a rec, a thought that I was having, like Dean was talking about, if you move that closer to the ticketing area, it would require less hard surface that you were going to have to come up with to be ADA, ADA compatible. Don't necessarily have to do that, you can make that hard surface from your location you're at right there, and then something over the spectator, spectator area, and now you have ADA compliance.
So, we got a lot of good ideas here, but if we're not going to change anything, I mean, what we have on the table is what we have on the table, we're not designing this right now.
Yeah.
Other than some minor changes.
I would just note, the conditions in your staff report just says, permanent restrooms adequate for this facility will be provided, and so we're not deciding today exactly what that will be. I want you to work, and obviously, you're already working with planning and building, where, you know, it sounds like maybe there's some disconnect between what exactly is a spectator and how those numbers are calculated, and so you need to continue to work that out. That's not today, it's just saying, as part of this permit, that will be worked out. So for this board's purpose, it is provided, it isn't set in stone as what was described today, just that will, there will be adequate facilities.
And just to add on to what Joe's saying, that's really something that needs to be worked out with Randy as the director and the building official, and you.
Any public comment?
Churchill County Code Compliance, official for the record. So in the building code, when it comes to ADA, when it comes to use of porta potties, for example, it's usually under special events, and it's a temporary use. When you're dealing with ADA, it's usually a fixed building with the, the fixtures include that are ADA compatible, and I felt that it would be appropriate to just make that statement, given the conversation being had.
Noted, thanks, Lorley. No public comment heard. Can I get a motion?
I do have one more thing, Chair. Tammy Edgman for the record. In regards to you stating that you did not and have not read the conditions, I did have a question on some of the, one of the conditions, and maybe you guys, Dean and Randy, you guys can clarify it, but on item number 2G on the conditions, it stated that alcohol sales and mobile food vendors are not approved in this permit, and establishing such requires an additional special use permit, so I understand that. But then if you go down to number eight, it says a use of mobile vendors is allowed for race events and special events. So I'm kind of confused.
I'm sorry, that's an error, thank you for spotting it. Number eight should not be there.
Thank you for clarification. And that's for you, since you did not, you don't have the conditions in front of you.
I did have the conditions, I just have...
Oh, okay, gotcha.
If nothing else, then can I get a motion, please?
Zach Bunyard for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, the staff report heard tonight, I move that we find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.080H have been met, and therefore approve the special use permit for Rowdy Acres Racetrack on APN 004-431-44 off of Pole Line Road. This approval is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Second, Mr. Chair, I would recommend per member Edgman's point that condition eight be deleted.
And in that recommendation, we'll delete number eight.
Motion's been approved by Mr. Bunyard or Commissioner Bunyard with a note on condition eight being removed, seconded by Commissioner Goings, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous? Just make sure that you understand that all the conditions have to be met?
Absolutely.
And I believe there's a 10-day appeal period, is that correct? Thank you. Agenda item 11B, consideration and possible action, election of Chair and Vice Chair for the Planning Commission to take office beginning January 2025.
Don't all jump at it once. Okay, so we are required to have a chair and a vice chair. Eric Blakey was the previous chair, and so someone will have to step forward. My suggestion is that you nominate a person, if they accept it, continue down the list to have the chair and vice chair, and then nominate them as a slate in your motion, and that just saves a little bit of time.
I'd like to nominate Zach Bunyard for Chair and Mark Kite as Vice Chair. Zach's been on the board longer than anybody, and he's got lots of experience, and I'm going to step down, because I'm not going to be here enough to do either position, I've got too many other commitments, so. I've got too many other commitments, so. And if anybody agrees with me, you have to second that.
Yeah, vice chair, I nominate Jeff Goings. Guess I'd make that nomination.
So are you saying you don't want to do it?
No.
No, what?
No, I don't want to be vice chair.
So the first nomination I made is for Zach Bunyard to be the chair, maybe I should just do it one at a time.
Yeah.
Well, we kind of got to clear that one first. If that's not going to happen, then somebody needs to make another nomination for the chair.
Yeah, I'll second that. Zach, do you want to be chair? Are you going to accept that nomination before we vote you in?
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Zach. Now, vice chair, there's been a motion for Jeff Goings to be the vice chair.
Yeah, I'd, I'd accept that as well.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to nominate Mr. Goings as the vice chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
There's nothing to approve, so you just moved a public comment.
Yep, there we go. Do we have any public comment? Crickets again. I move to adjourn this meeting at 7:40. Yeah, it wasn't that good.